Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 20th, 2023 Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Can we do roll call? Trustee Middleton? Trustee, oh, trust, roll call.
Oh, you roll called, sorry.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Njenga.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Lensey.
Here.
Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
Trustee Red.
Trustee Red. He's here.
Okay. Trustee White, VP White, okay, and President Saunders.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to begin by naming the new student trustee for the 23-24 school year. Her name is Anna DeLeon, and she will be a senior at Mount Vernon High School. Anna, are you here?
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope everyone is having a wonderful evening. My name is Anna DeLeon, and I have had the honor to be the new trustee representative for the student body and Mount Vernon High School. And I am honored for the position, and I'm very grateful to the Board of Trustees, Dr. Pierce and the Superintendent for giving me the opportunity to represent the potential at our school and advocate for our school's talent.
Thank you, Anna. Next, the PTA Council will be giving out scholarships. President Anderson. Yeah, there you go.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Latoya Anderson, and I am the PTA Council President. I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Edith Kaplan Scholarship Committee, which includes Carrie Smith, Erica Peterson, Janine Fertile, Mendisa Parchment, Michelle Ryo, and we are missing Anissa Vincent and Dr. Gerald Leotard. Thank you, Dr. Smith and Board of Trustees, for giving us this opportunity to present these scholarships to these well-deserving scholars tonight. The Edith Kaplan Scholarship is awarded to eligible seniors from all three high schools in Mount Vernon City School District. There is an application process. Students have to submit their transcript, letters of recommendations, the university. They've been accepted to, and of course, verification of enrollment. And, you know, the scholarship committee go through the process of, a detailed process of selecting our scholars. These winners, these scholarship winners, have distinguished themselves as students making a difference through their commitment to self-improvement. They have made the school and our community a better place. So congratulations to all the Edith Kaplan Scholarship winners, and it is with great pleasure that we offer and acknowledge them tonight. Shall we give them a round of applause? So to the 2023 Edith Kaplan Scholarship winners, your hard work and dedication have been an inspiration to all of us, and we are delighted to see you being recognized this way. You all deserve to be celebrated, and we hope this scholarship will help. They will receive a certificate and a check for $1,000 each, and we are hoping, we're hoping it will help to offset a little of your college expenses. We know that college is expensive, and, you know, it's a little, but, you know, we hope it will help. So we are proud of you all, and thank you, everyone, and I want to thank the community because it through our Edith Kaplan Scholarship Dinner Dance that we were able to raise these funds. And donation, thanks to Mr. Ken Silver. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our Edith Kaplan Scholarship Fund is now at $32,000, and with this, we will be awarding $29,000 to our seniors, and we will also be giving two eighth graders from each school $50 each. So thank you very much to everyone. At this time, I'm going to be calling on the PTA President from each high school to present the scholarship to the award winners tonight. Let's welcome Erica Peterson from Mount Vernon High School.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Erica Peterson, PTA President from Mount Vernon High School. Unfortunately, Ms. Vincent, the PTA President for Denzel Washington School for the Arts could not be here, so I will be presenting in her place. First up, from Denzel Washington School of the Arts, it's Alani Bandu. Alan White. Amira Johnson. Fabian Powell. Jevado Bartley. Jaylene Padilla. Skylar Vincent. And Sabrina Sylvain. Next up, from Mount Vernon High School, home of the Knights, we've got Alexander Carney. Aubrey Daniels. Ashley Nemhard. Darren Liu. Dylan Richardson. Eric Peterson. Khadija Williams. Ms. Leslie Iyamu. I don't think Leslie's here. Mia Martinez. Priscilla Zoe Nyarko. And Walt Reynolds. Next up, we have the PTA President of STEAM Academy, Ms. Janine Fertile.
Hello, everyone. We have Brianna Cobbs. Daniela Costa Dos Santos. Isabella Ruiz. Leonardo Valdivinos. Ryan Brown. Shadorah Siles. Sidney Brooks. Tran Chow. And Marceli Aridio.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Smith and the Board of Trustees again, and congratulations to everyone. Have a good night.
Okay, so the Board of Trustees would like to give out awards as well. This is for the 2023 Board of Trustees Most Improved Student Awards Recommendation. So for the seniors, they will receive $1,000 each, and for the eighth graders, they will receive $100. We will begin with Benjamin Turner. May the principals please come up when we call their schools. Actually.
You can call your students.
All right, the first person on the list, first of all, good afternoon, everyone, is Urinelli Martinez. Where's Urinelli? Okay, the second person is Riquan Williams. Come on, Riquan. Please state the money. And the last person is Anaya Williams.
Next is Cecil Parker. Ms. Green. Hello. Okay. First, we have Carlos Garcia Penya. Brandon Pilsen. And Aiden Ingram. How are you doing? Carlos, Brandon. No, Carlos, Brandon, and Aiden Ingram. Next is Denzel Washington School for the Arts.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to welcome up Amaya Strong. This is for the $1,000. There she comes. Natalie Hooks. Let me see. Okay. Nope. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham School. Hunt McGregor. Okay. So first up, we have Mia Cruz Lemos. Devandra Rup, ooh, Rupa Reed. And lastly, from Graham, we have Jaden Landia. Grime School.
Good evening, everyone. Aisha Laura Almonte. Andia Christian Dot. And Alan Nunez.
Hamilton School. Thank you, Mr. Cornelius.
Good evening, everyone. For Hamilton School, we have Owen Valdevia Rosales. We have Tajana Waits. And we have Mr. Christine Martin. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. Okay, from Lincoln School.
Good evening, everyone. Gabriel Vidware. Nyla Booty. And Ryan Ramos.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next up, we have Mount Vernon High School.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Our first scholar is Melia, Mia Vaquero. Come on up, Mia. Congratulations, Mia. Next up, we have Gerald Barkett. Congrats, Gerald. And third, we have Terrell Davis Jr.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Okay, Mount Vernon Honor Academy.
Good evening, everyone. So we have Johnny Rodriguez. Congratulations, Johnny. Tristan Benjamin. Congratulations, Tristan. And last, but certainly not least, Darius Jones. Congratulations, Darius.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have the Leadership Academy, Mount Vernon Leadership.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm accepting on behalf of the Mount Vernon Leadership Academy. Our scholars are having their eighth grade prom right now, so we would like to celebrate the individuals who achieved this award. So without further ado, Ms. Ashley Moreno. Ms. Galvez Sanchez. And Mr. Vaneer Verres. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is the STEAM Academy. Good evening. Jennifer Jimenez Bonifacio. Isabella Cheberes. Amadison Patrick. Thank you. Mandela. From Mandela, we have Brian Toons Abak. Guliana Raffiola. And we have Brianna Hill. Pennington. Okay, from Pennington, we have Annabella Lisi. Saban Muriki. Molly Mitchell. And George Tannerus. Trappaggin. Okay, from Trappaggin, we have Francesca Dubon. We have Jaden Monroe. And we have Dennis Barrara. Next up is Williams School. I know, it's unproven. We have Ms. Waterman, Dr. Waterman.
Good evening, everyone. We have Shalea Hernandez. There she is. Congratulations. Yoliann Matheson. Congratulations, sweetie. And Nashane Ingram. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you so very much. That's from the Board Trustees. Next up, we have the Principal of the Year. This award goes to Dr. Pauline Pierce. Okay, so the award says, "To Dr. Pauline Pierce, in recognition of your ability to create a new Mount Vernon High School and create a learning environment conducive to students' academic success for the school year 2022-23." Thank you.
Thank you so much to the Board Trustee members and members of the Superintendent Cabinet. I truly appreciate this. Thank you, everyone.
Next up, we have the Nightlight Award, and this award goes to Dr. Marie Gabitane. The award says, "Dr. Marie Gabitane, in recognition of your dedication to the Mount Vernon City School District and ongoing beyond the call of duty for the betterment of all our students during the 22-23 school year." Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we wanted to recognize the greatest overall improvement for the BOY, the MOY, so the beginning of the school year, the middle of the school year, and the end of the school year in reading, and that goes to Trappaggin. They met annual typical growth at 64%. For the math, it was a tie between the Honor Academy. Congratulations. And Trappaggin. The school with the best overall attendance K to A goes to Lincoln School. That's for K6, and for 7, 8, it goes to Grime School. So we're trying to move in the right direction. I thank you all for your very hard work. We're trying to have a smooth landing for the end of the school year, and, and of course, it goes without saying that we couldn't do it without our staff members, the principals and the leader in the instructional building, and we thank them, as well as the administrative staff, staff, and of course, the students. Parents, you play a major role in how our students are successful, and we really want to thank you as well. I just wanted to also mention the graduations. You know, graduations are going on this week. In terms of senior graduation, Mount Vernon High School, we anticipate there'll be 260 -- In terms of senior graduation, Mount Vernon High School, we anticipate there'll be 265 students graduating. Denzel Washington will have 56 students. And STEAM Academy with 129 students. We appreciate all the work and all the effort that's being done. And that concludes our student recognition, and we could turn it over now to...
Public comments. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak.
I'm very sorry, refreshments are in the smaller cafeteria. Thank you.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, Board Trustees and/or the Superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the Superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is trustee Middleton.
Just want to say good evening to everybody tonight. I chose to stand here tonight just to speak. I want to say kudos to all the staff members for the awards. Kudos to the students, definitely. My name is Bishop Reverend Dr. Lynn Middleton. My apologies for not being here on June 6th, was very ill, should have been here, but I'm here tonight. And so I come tonight to say that the master above will make you the head and not the tail. If you pay attention to the K-Met commands, you will always be at the top and not the bottom. So, I want to say hello, Mount Vernon, and I want to thank you so much tonight as a community, those who are on Facebook Live, those who sit here tonight. I thank you for being, allowing me to be a newly elected school board trustee. I want to thank you for voting me in as the highest vote getter to the school board trustee seat. God first, and I could not have done it without your votes. Votes do matter, if you really know. If you want your voice to be heard, then you must vote. Politics have its place. However, I am not politics for politics, but people for people. There is too much happening, too much going on. So you matter tonight. Your children should be first, and they matter. I am a product of the school system. I say I turned out pretty good. I retired in June 2021 after 40 years from a typist to a school counselor in this district. But I was determined that I would be standing where you, Mount Vernon, have put me tonight. My educational philosophy is that all children can learn. I have been on this seat a little over a month since May 16. Within a month's time, I cannot say it enough, that our children and your children should be first. So let us please pay attention. Secondly, I just want to say this, that I am on assignment. I'm on assignment as a school board trustee. If not, I would not be here tonight. To my opposes, you can never point your finger in my face, short of putting it in my mouth to my nose, right? You can watch me closely all you want, but I want to tell you, you can never point your finger at me again. I will not tolerate it, and I am certainly not intimidated by it. My name is not Kizzi, but my name is Reverend, Bishop Reverend Dr. Lynn Middleton. And so I hope you hear me tonight, because I want you to be heard. And so now, as a trustee, I come to do the job of exactly that. I did not get here by pulling up signs from the dirt. I did not get here by lying my way here. I did not get here by saying there would be no more corruption for five to eight years, but there still is corruption. The same tune is being sung. I did not get here because I cheated. I did not get here because I tried to scandalize anybody's name. I did not come here to cause or be a part of divisiveness or division, and all that encompasses that. I did not by any means do any of that. So let me ask you a very important question to my colleagues and all of us tonight. Why are we rehiring those who with proof were ineffective? Effectiveness is shown, and fire those over 20 years and more experienced have proof of improvement and effectiveness? So we need to think about some things here, and the list goes on and on. So let us be mindful tonight, Mount Vernon, south side, north side, west side, east side. We want to be on the right side. The people have spoken tonight. It is obvious that there must be a change in all caps. If it is to be, somebody said what? That it is up to me. So are you a leader, or are you just being led? This district cannot afford to continue to be run off one or two or three people who think that they can govern the lives of many others. No, it cannot. And it takes all of us to be on the right side. Our kids are important. Our nephews, our cousins, we are all important. So I just want to say this as I take my seat, that we are a team. Together, everyone achieves more. So let us do the right thing. I got it. And not trip out. Thank you very much for voting for me to the board seat. Blessings.
Jerry Lorday.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Reverend Dr. Middleton, for that word of encouragement, because I needed that tonight. I needed that because, my name is Jerry Lorday, Reverend Jerry Lorday from Mount Vernon Heights Congregational Church. I'm also the president of the Mount Vernon Community Forum on Education. My, my, if you, anybody who knows me, the one thing that I always talk about when I'm standing in front of people in this board is about parent involvement, parent engagement. I'm here tonight to talk specifically about Denzel Washington School. Last Tuesday, Dr. Smith was invited by the Denzel Washington PTA to be, to a meeting to update us on the status of the investigation on the suspension of Dr. Collins. The Denzel Washington parents and community received communication, and they are from, from Dr. Have not received...
Ms. Lorday, please do not mention names.
Okay, I can't mention any names?
No.
Okay. Well, I already said what I'm saying. Okay. So you got the picture. Anyway, parents and community were, were welcomed to the meeting, and the reason why that meeting was held or was asked to be held was because we have not received any communication from March, from the, from the district. It is now, it was June. This is now June. As a community person, parents, don't let your voice be silenced. We need questions to be answered. And I don't want to, I am not a person here to berate anyone. I thank you all for your service, and I want you to know that and understand that, but as a parent, I think I have a right. As a community person, I think I have a right. As a student, I think I have a right to ask questions and get answers. So I'm not here to filibuster, but I'm here to ask these questions. After the meeting was over, I left still having questions. What was the result of the investigation? Why weren't the parents informed in a timely fashion that what was happening? If Hunter Biden can be shouted out for what he did wrong, I can't understand why it can't be done here. Why do we have to call a meeting to hear from the district and the school board? What support has been offered to our students who are suffering the loss of their surrogate mother, advocate, and mentor? The issue started over children feeling that they were not being responded to in an appropriate way. But still, I wonder, who has been sent in to talk to the children, who after two years of not being in school, who are still going through challenges now? Who has talked to them? And parents, you are slacking on your job, because you have allowed your voice to be silent. Is there any legal reason why we can't be given the results of the investigation? I would like to know, the lawyers are here, because we always say we cannot say this before legal reasons, but we are never even given a statement as to what's going on. Who was the investigative team? Also, we were told that there will be a new principal, AP, a district administrative arts position coming up, and we were told that interviews started, and that there was already a parent on the team. Yet, is it on OLS already? Have all the teachers in this, in this community already know? Does anybody else know about it? These are questions that we need to ask, and these are questions that we need answers for. And it's not just enough for me to stand here and tell you, speak my mind, but it's, it's more when I get an answer. And so I see, week after week, I sat out here for over 20 years, and my time is up? Okay, cool. Because I want to be respectful of you. Thank you for listening, and if you have the same feelings, please see me, because I need to know where we are.
Warren Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board, president, acting suit, ladies and gentlemen. So, oh, we're in a different building for the school board meeting. Thank you. This is dope. This is so amazing. One of the things that Drive for Five talked about was getting out of 165. Trustee White and I talked about having meetings on the road when I was still serving last term. This is really cool. We get to come out to the parents where the students are and have our board meetings in the buildings that they attend. This is really cool. Thank you so much for listening. That's kudos. I want to talk about a couple of things, as far as what the, okay, so the resolutions. So whoever doesn't know how the resolutions work, every resolution that you hear the board vote on is a aye, or a no, or an abstain. Every resolution is in board docs. Board docs is available to everyone to see at home, as well as everyone up top and front. Every board doc resolution has an attachment as backup, which tells to and provides detail as to what every trustee is voting on. In tonight's board docs, there are $613,000 of contracts being renewed or amended for people in positions, and not one position is shown in any of those resolutions. None of the backup shows the title, it doesn't show anything. It just has a name and a dollar. Now you're talking about over half a million dollars that we're saying we're going to pay to various people. I'm hoping that we should, I mean, I don't know how any of you are going to vote on that, but trust me, when I'm, July 6th, when I take my seat, if we don't have proper documentation, I'm not going to vote for it, and I'm going to call out it's missing documentation, it should be there. I know there was another activist from our city, she's an amazing human being, and she served on our board for a short time. It was one of the things she always asked for, dollars and stints and details, because we can't clearly vote on anything if we don't have all the backup and the people can't see. If you're going to hire somebody, pay him over $150,000, and you talk to the people that they report to, and they clearly have not been doing the best job, then why are we bringing these people back? Not sure. But let's make sure that we hire these folks and we pay them all of these hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they do what they're supposed to do for the district, for our children, and the people who work in our, in our district. Speaking back to something I talked to a while back, audits. The audit of the Special Education Department for the years 2019 to 2023 at least, still needs to be done. Audit of DASSA and how it was, how it was handled. I know there's parents that may not be here right now, that some are listening, and they've reported how a lot of things in DASSA were questionably handled. You got principals in different buildings, and let me just say, congratulations, Dr. Pierce, and every other principal, because there's a lot of principals in our district that are absolutely amazing, and I salute every last one of you. Thank you for what you do, assistant principals as well. And also, I'm going to talk about the fact what, I'm sorry, what was your name, ma'am?
Jerry Lorday.
Lorday?
Lorday.
Lorday? Ms. Lorday was talking about basically transparency. There's a ton of resignations, new hires, terminations on board docs tonight, okay? Out of every last one of those resolutions, it's impacting, if it's, if it's building leadership and it's impacting a school building, we should be communicating to those parents timely. No one should be finding out two days before school starts, "Oh, I got a new principal." "Oh, I got a new assistant principal." That shouldn't be the case. That is failed schematics, failed practices. For too many years now, it's too many people in here. I have students and this, children in this district, two which are graduating this week. Amen. But, yes, yes, Lynn, I said amen. Thank you, Dr. Lynn. I appreciate you so much today. But I just want to say, listen, we have to do better. This moving around, having our meetings in other buildings is the first step, but we gotta pay attention.
Mr. Mitchell, I believe your time is up.
Actually, it wasn't. It just was up just now, but you stopped me one second in advance, but it's okay. I'm not mad at you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Cynthia Crincher. Cynthia Crincher? Okay. That ends our public comment. Superintendent's report. Okay, for the superintendent's report, I'm going to ask Carlos Ramirez to introduce a presentation on esports.
Board of Trustees, Superintendent Schools, thank you very much. I'd like to invite to the front Ian Smith and Mr. Polly, our champion teachers from Mount Vernon STEAM Academy. They're going to do a short presentation of our esports for Mount Vernon schools. I want you to just pay attention to this one, and then we're going to entertain some questions.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith, community stakeholders. My name is Ian Smith. I teach social studies at Mount Vernon STEAM Academy. This is my co-adviser, Peter Polly, teaches math at STEAM Academy. So esports. What are esports? So esports is essentially... So esports is essentially competitive video game playing. However, this is not just getting together, hanging out, playing video games very casually. It's a structured setup. It's organized. There's teams, there's collaboration, there's communication. Students are working together towards a common goal. This is essentially like any other sport that you can think of traditional sport. However, it's in a digital environment. The typical configuration for esports, teams can range anywhere from six players, five players, all the way down to single players. Now, these students need to be equipped with high-end equipment, high-end computers, because it's like competing in a sport such as football or track without the necessary safety equipment or cleats or any anything that would help them to perform on the same level as their the teams that they are facing. So in this case, high-end computers are essential for our students to be able to compete on the same level as everyone else. Now, where esports are played is typically in an established arena of some kind. So it's a dedicated space with these high-end machines set up. Students go to this location, they have their practices there, and they also have their official matchups in these locations. Jumping around here. There we go. Now, esports is estimated to be by 2027, a $6.82 billion industry. And just to put that into perspective, the music industry is currently estimated to be about $16 billion at the same point, and the music industry has been around a lot longer than esports. So this is a growing industry with a lot of potential. In fact, by 2027, this is our incoming freshmen. This is when they will be graduating high school. So there's going to be a lot of opportunities for our students who are leaving high school to participate in this growing industry. Now, there are many benefits of esports. So you can see that there's a whole host of potential benefits here, but three that stand out to me are teamwork, diversity, inclusion, and scholarships. So as I was saying before, teamwork, students are not just hanging out playing very casually. This is an organized sport. Students are communicating and adjusting plans on the fly. They're strategizing. They are communicating, working together to solve a problem. And at Steam Academy, that is the goal of engineering, is to solve problems. So this aligns directly with what we're trying to do. Diversity and inclusion, this also esports also provides an opportunity for students who might not normally be able to participate in a traditional sport. Perhaps they have a disability, a handicap, or and also, this could be a co-ed experience. In fact, we just put out a survey just to get a gauge student interest, and we received back a 90% positive response rate. And about half of those students who want to participate are girls. So we have a truly co-ed opportunity here. Also, scholarships, there are a lot of scholarship opportunities available. The league we're looking to participate in is called the High School Esports League. Over 2,000 colleges recruit from this league. There's about $25 million in scholarships, and $5 to $8 million of that goes unused, unclaimed. So there's a huge opportunity and a new path for students to go to college by participating in esports. And I have a couple of examples here. Here's a student who signed to Oklahoma University for esports, so a full ride, just as they might get a full ride for basketball or football or any other sport, they can get a full ride for esports as well. And I just want to add too, before I move on to this next slide, there are local colleges that are are STEAM graduates are actually going to be going to that have esports available, Cornell, Iona, Stony Brook. And there's also local high schools in the area that have esports as well, Washingtonville, Ramapo. So this is not just an unusual kind of thing, and it's a growing industry. Over 2,000 colleges are recruiting. Now, CTE esports integration. So there's more involved in this than just simply playing the game or being a player in 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 the league. There's a whole industry surrounding this. So things such as event production, show casting, broadcasting, the graphic design, the 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 soundboard, lighting, all of the things that go on involved in a production, putting on a show can be can be participate in our esports league. So there's a lot of ways that students can be involved besides just playing a game. And we actually, Mr. Polly has an anecdotal story to share.
Well, my own son, when he finished high school, got a three-month summer job, and his job was to be the statistician for the color commentator for one of these esports events. So he went around with the color commentator who was doing the broadcast, and when the color commentator went, oh, that was a bad move, and then started spouting statistics, my son's job was to put the statistics in his ear. That got him really interested in statistics, and he ended up, four years later, finishing up as an actuary. And he's now an actuary doing statistics, probably is his career path. So even though he himself was not involved in esports or any of the particular events, he found himself a pathway from that impact.
In addition to that, many colleges are also now offering esports management as a degree area. That makes a lot of sense. Doesn't want to go. Okay. So the High School Esports League that we're also looking to participate in, they have built in ed law 2D compliance, their COPA compliance. So in terms of our student data, this is not something that we would need to be concerned with. They use anonymous accounts for students, so all the students' data is protected. They can't the data can't be sold. So this they set the league up to protect students. The league structure, so students, as I said, are going to be practicing every week, just like any other sport. They're going to have a matchup, an official matchup with another school who's participating in the league. There's about eight weeks of regular season play, two weeks of postseason play. And what's really great about this league is, going back to the diversity and inclusion, they have a built-in algorithm for matching schools. A big problem with competitive video games is that some students could be at a much higher level than other students. And when you get matched up like that, you can get steamrolled, it's not very fun. So what this league has done is developed an algorithm so they're matchmaking, they're matched with someone, a team that is kind of on their level. In addition to this, we can have as many students, teams, rosters as we can fill, and we can have different tiers of play. So just think of like your ninth grade, junior varsity, varsity teams, we can have that as well. So we can have a lot of student participation. And as I said, we have about a 90% positive response rate to to this program. Now, the school year season, this is a little outdated. They just added another season. So there's a fall season, now a winter season, and a spring season, and then finally, a summer season. Now, a part of that survey that we put out, we have about 15 students who are willing to help pilot this program this summer. And just to give you a sense of the excitement around this program, we're right now at Steam, we're giving it, we're doing regents exams, we're doing tests. So we don't have regular access to students to kind of get the word out. So the fact that in just a couple of days, about two days, we have 15 students who say, yes, we want to do this this summer, to give up their summer and participate and help spearhead this program for the rest of the district, that says a lot about the excitement that our students have. Here's a selection of the games that they offer. So it ranges from single-player games to three-player, four-player, five-player, six-player games. And these are games that students, like I said, they're organized in teams, and they compete against other organized teams. And then finally, this is the space that we were considering in Mount Vernon Steam Academy for this arena, this pilot program. This is a large space in the basement, and it has high ceilings, it has a lot of room for to kind of like give it that arena feel. And, you know, I kind of envisioned students staying after to see the matchup, to support their classmates, support their friends as they're competing. And that is my presentation, and I thank you for your time.
The purpose of this program is basically to provide with exposure for our students to something that is so big. Just to make a comparison, and Mr. Smith can correct me, the music industry has been around for a long time, and it's about double the investment that is generating in terms of production of money and revenue. It's six point and six point?
Six point.
$6.8 billion in esports. And there are multiple opportunities for careers surrounding this in design, engineering, math, science, and other and other areas. So bringing this to Mount Vernon will provide for that competitive edge for our students. And, you know, it's already motivating everybody. We start this about a week ago when we did our first presentation, they went back to the school, talked to the students, and we already got volunteers that would like to do this program in the summer. Our goal right now is to try to make it happen. We want to try to run a program during the summer time as an after-school for about two, three hours, and it will be our champion teachers here to start that work. And then we want to see how it goes in terms of the competition and the and the building of the teams, and then we can bring this to all our high schools because it's the right place to actually motivate our students into this career path. In addition to that, this provides opportunity for students with disabilities to do sports that they normally cannot do. So it's something that should go into the fifth department, and that's our goal. We want to tie this also with curriculum, with opportunities for our students. If you have any questions, this is the moment. We have here not only the more enthusiastic team, but also our leadership is being very supportive on this idea, and we want the support from the board. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Next, we have Karen Woodall. She's a TA at the Leadership, and she wants to speak about a very special field trip.
So before I begin, I want to start by saying good evening to the board. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, parents, friends, loved ones, colleagues. I want to say thank you for inviting me here today. I'm very honored to be here. I stand before you to speak about field trip experience that I did not only for our school, the Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, but, you know, I wanted to say thank you to my principal for allowing me and giving me the opportunity to work and coordinate with other schools. So it was it was an honor, you know, to be able to do that. And I stand here because this is very serious and dear to me because I believe in experiences and trips provide experiences. Not only does it provide experiences, but the outcome definitely coincides with literacy, with reading, writing, and all of the other components that, you know, that we're here that we want for our students in the district. So I wanted to start by saying that. I also wanted to give a special thank you to Ms. Kerwin, who came in during the time that I coordinated the trip, you know, within the last final hours of the trip and gave a lot of support. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. I was hoping for parents and students to be here, but I understand that they have prom. So, you know, I'm happy that you're all here, and I'm just going to speak to you as staff. And I know it'll get back, you know, to the others. I had something I wanted to read really quick, but I want to know if we're pressed for time before I do this. Are we pressed? Can I do it? Or are we pressed? Is it short? It's short. The reason I'm reading this really quick is because this particular these particular literature not only speaks to the kids of our district and the kids with special needs, it also speaks to staff. It also speaks to the parents because we are in a time where we they say that we are out of the pandemic, but there are remnants of it that still exists. And as leaders, staff, students, parents, we are all dealing with that, and we are human. And we are trying to do our best, you know, to provide, you know, to provide a good, I want to say, good education for our our students, but as leaders, we are finding our way. So I want to read this really, really quick. It says, "I am human, a book of empathy. I'm finding my way and choosing my path on this incredible journey. I have big dreams. I see possibility. I have a feeling of wonder. I make discoveries. I have a playful side. I find joy in friendships. But being human means I am not perfect. I make mistakes. I can hurt others with my words, my actions, and even my silence. I can be hurt too. I can be fearful, sad, or timid to try something new. I am human. But then I remind myself that because I am human, I can make choices. I can move forward. I can act with compassion and lend a helping hand. I can treat others with equality and be fair. I can choose not to fight, but instead to listen. I can say I'm sorry. I am human, one of billions but unique. I am not alone. I am connected to my family, to my friends, to the world. We are humans together, and I will keep trying to be the best version of me. I am full of hope. I am human." So I really wanted the students to hear this and the parents to hear this, but that's okay. I'll go ahead now with the presentation. So this this field trip I coordinated with the Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, the Benjamin Turner Middle School, Graham Elementary School, and the Trapehagen School. So I wanted to thank everybody for their support in allowing me to do this and the district as well. Thank you. It's the loudest we can get. I don't have the clicker. I don't have the click. I don't. Okay. So the field trip, again, like I said, it promotes experiences for the students, but it incorporates the five strands of reading. I just put it here for you to see. Phonemic awareness, systematic phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. How does it do that? Because when the students came back from their trip, they provided me with reflection pieces where they were actually asked by their teachers to make sure that their sentences and their phrases and everything was put to perfection. These are the buses. We went to the famous Aaron Davis Music Hall Marion Anderson Theater. I wanted them to be able to kind of smile and laugh and just provide, you know, a happy time for them. So these are some of the pictures. Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, Benjamin Turner Middle School, Trapehagen School, and Graham Elementary School. And those are some of the teachers, Mr. McGrath and Ms. Bryant, she was one of the chaperones for the trip, one of our social workers at the school that gave support. Ms. Hope, one of the reading specialists, supported by being a chaperone on the trip. That's one of our teachers, Ms. Lucio, with her second-grade class all in smiles as they they left the theater. That's them entering the theater. Ms. Burrell and Ms. Samuels along with Mr. Smith. That's the second-grade teacher and staff. And these are some of the professional students that they got to see, the professional dancers that, I want to say it was a multicultural performance. So these students were ages about five all the way up to maybe 20. And for the students to be able to see other students that are multicultural, that are the same age and look like each other, it was really nice because they reflected that in print. So I have it here for you to see. Not going to go through it, but they actually sent some of these comments. And that is Ms. Robin Williams. She's the founder of the Uptown Dance Academy that they went to see. And that's some of her staff. And that's a special thank you to everyone. I thank you, and I hope to provide more trips like this going forward for next year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woodall. Next, we have members from the Teacher Center. They will be presenting.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Julie Lieberstein. I'm one of the co-directors of the Teacher Center of Central Westchester, and this is my partner, my other co-director, Tony Gammels. I would also like to acknowledge the people that are here to support us. Michael Jurgensen is on our policy board. Francina Jubilee is also on our policy board, and Keith McCall is here. He is the president of the Mount Vernon Teachers, Teachers Union. I also want to recognize Sabina Kelly. She sits on our policy board and provides a lot of support to us. And previously, Warren Mitchell was on our policy board, and he will be back in the summer. Thank you to the board for giving us some time to share about the Teacher Center of Central Westchester. So Teacher Centers began in 1984, and they are funded through a New York State grant. The Teacher Centers in New York State, including ours, the Teacher Center of Central Westchester, provides complimentary professional learning that is open to all Mount Vernon teachers. The Teacher Center is governed by a 22-member policy board, which meets five times a year and helps to plan the learning for the offerings for the teachers. We have two Mount Vernon teachers, as I said, that is on our policy board, and they are able to provide us with some input on what the district is looking for. We look to partner with the administration in the districts that are part of our consortium so we're able to support their teachers. If you have time, you can scan that QR code, and that provides you with a link to our website. And you can also like us on Facebook to learn more about the Teacher Center of Central Westchester.
Our loanable technology that she just showed you, and thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for helping us out. We have B-bots, and we have Ozabots now, and these are provided to any teacher who wants to use them for her class with training. So next time, you can play with them.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, we're just going to touch on a couple of the hot topics in education right now. One of the hot topics in education is the science of reading, and I wanted to just give you a little information on the science of reading. So the science of reading is the vast body of research on how students learn to read and write. This research has been conducted over the past five decades. The science of reading has culminated in a preponderance of evidence to inform how proficient reading and writing develop, why some students have difficulty, and how we can most effectively assess and teach and therefore improve student outcomes through prevention and intervention for reading difficulties. We are supporting teachers with a knowledge base through a variety of book studies we offer, workshops on implementing instructional practices into the classroom, and opportunities to participate in regional conferences and focusing on sharing instructional tools to implement the tenants of the science of reading. Children learn to read, and it's a product of developing both word recognition and language comprehension skills. Development of these two areas supports good reading comprehension or the understanding of text as it is supported by the science of reading. This body of research that we're sharing with teachers helps teachers and families understand how to support children on their journey to become skilled readers. Tony is now going to talk a little bit about another hot topic in education.
First, I want to thank you for your presentation because what I do, what I've been working on is culturally, cultural-relevant tasks. And I want to take, thank Mr. Ramirez for helping me all the time when my computer breaks and I have to come to Mount Vernon. I am a Mount Vernon resident. My family, my, my great-grandfather was controller, and we were Yan and Tunos from way back when. I don't know if that name is familiar to you, but I am a true Mount Vernonite, and I'm so thrilled that I can be here and supporting my community. So let me talk about performance-based learning. I'm on the SLT team, and what we do with state leadership, there are 13 of us. We're from every Teacher Center throughout New York State. And on that team, I get to know what's happening in New York State Ed. The first thing I want to talk about is performance-based learning and assessment, the planned pilot that's in effect now. It's starting, it will be ending in 2027. What we're trying to do is change children's mindset from what can I do with what I know? We want to make it to that rather than what do I know? There's two examples up here. One would be students learn geometry concepts. At the end of the unit, they create a layout for a garden design applying the concepts they are learning. That is just the finished product. Versus, there's an empty lot near the school. Students are tasked with creating a plan for a community garden space, and we can visualize that in Mount Vernon. We do have community garden space. They will present their ideas to the city council. In order to create their plans, students learn and apply their knowledge of geometric concepts. They are responding to a challenge, and this will be the new thrust for education. No more fill-in-the-dots and A, B, C, D. They want to assess children with what they know and what, what is in their community. I just have to share a short story. I was working with a young man, and he got a question incorrect on a test, and we were going over his work. And the only reason he got it wrong, he didn't know what a lemonade stand was. Now, we would assume a lemonade stand. So it wasn't because he didn't know how to do the work. He couldn't wrap his head around what's a lemonade stand. My kids sold lemonade, but that doesn't mean every child does. So we really need to change our mindset. We really need to focus on where we are. What is the culture of that neighborhood? Thank you. So science, math, SEL connections make sense. We are trying, knowing that PBL is coming, and we're ahead of the game. We are already this year have had courses that focus on authentic learning. One of the classes that we did were culturally responsive math tasks and science tasks where teachers take their questions. They focus on information and the relevancy of their, of their children. Another one is strength-based teaching. We need to stop thinking of our children's deficits and raising them up. We need to look at their assets and take them forward. Another mindset. Of course, there's changing math mindsets. How many of us say, I don't say it anymore. I used to. I just can't do math. My mother can't do math. Nobody in our family can do math. That's not true. We can all do math, and we want to start giving children a positive outlook for that. Did you know that mathophobia starts by five years old? Five years old. And finally, the Q focus, just ask one question. We want students to start asking their own questions. So we're teaching teachers a question formulation technique so they can make one change. And the one change is we have to stop asking the questions. Our kids have to ask the questions. Thank you. All right. So how do we access the professional learning opportunities? Easy peasy. We send to our policy board a flyer, and on that flyer are our classes. And all they have to do is click the classes they're interested in, and they come up on MLP. Once they register MLP, then we need to have them approved by members of administration. Once that happens, they take the class, they log in their hours, and we send their completed CTE to them. They are responsible for collecting their hours. So that is another workshop we did for teachers. Could you click the link? Can you go back and do link to website? Thank you. I just want to show you our website. This is always attached to our newsletters. If you go to register in the corner. Can you see it? It says, "Register." Just click on that. On our website, they can go in, find their courses. So there's, it couldn't be easier than that. If they have questions, they always can call us. Julie and I give them our cell phone numbers. Our classes now are starting to be in-person. So you may see in-person online. And what that means is we are, we are actually using the Eastchester Library. So they can come online, or if their school district wants them in-person, we're doing hybrid. And if we could get a room somewhere in the district, we would love to have them right here on your campus. I live around the corner. I can walk right here and teach the class. So think about that for us. It would, I think it would be wonderful for the educators of Mount Vernon. And lastly, we appreciate your support. Call us anytime. Sabina, bless you for your help and letting us come here today and scheduling it. It has been wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Smith, and I think that's it.
Are there any questions?
I wanted to hear from the two representatives from the Mount Vernon district about their response to this center.
So I'm going to speak from Ms. Jubilee as well. I'm Michael Jernigans. I'm a teacher in the Mount Vernon City School District. I've been working with the Teacher Center for roughly about six to seven years now. One of the benefits of the Teacher Center that these two young ladies sell themselves short when they describe what the Teacher Center really is and what it can do. The process and what they're really working to do is, is to partner with school districts, look at what they're trying to do as far as implementing curriculum and curriculum and instruction in a school district, work with the administrators, and create those workshops with them so they can have that implemented into our school district. The thing about it is that they, the favorite word I like to tell them to say, tell them everybody that is free because the more that you let people know that this is free and that we could work together to create these free programs for teachers that we want to house aside of the school district can support them to move academically forward in a way they want to. And understanding that there's, in particularly in our school district right now, we're using foundations. They just completed multiple workshops reaching into other school districts with foundations. So how much of a support we would have had that the teachers are getting workshops already in the district for foundations, but they can also say, you know, I'm having a little, I need a little extra support, I need a little extra time with that. And they're able to go outside of the school district, still staying here and get that information. Dr. Doggett?
Yes. We're going to be embedding the science of reading in our ELA curriculum for starting at grade four and up. Now, there's specific strategies that we're going to embed. Do I meet with you if there's going to be additional support on the same strategy? So for example, if we can do five strategies that we add in, I would like that to be reinforced through the Teacher Center, then six or seven, eight additional strategies. We could just focus on the five. So will I meet with this group?
Tony and I would be happy to set up a time to meet with you. All of the courses and workshops we offer are after-school hours, so we'd be happy to provide additional support in the area of the foundations as well as the strategies that you're looking to implement in the upper grades. And I appreciate wanting, not wanting to overwhelm the teachers with more things, but to reinforce and expand them.
Yes. And consistency and cohesiveness is what I'm really looking for. And I think that can reinforce some of the things that we would like to do in the CNI Department, specifically under ELA. Thank you.
I just want to add that we can easily work with you. We'd love to work with you. We would have to, they would take it after school or on a Saturday. They would still go through MLP and register for the class because it will come through our grant, and then it would be, we would send you their completed CTE hours. And I think that's a good incentive because they know that they're getting these hours that they need for licensing.
And we just, and we are here to just now partner with, with anything, anything that you have as far as curriculum and instruction that you want to implement and you want to push forward, even looking at, I largely work with the special education population, looking at workshops and things like that can be implemented and engrossed into supporting special education in a more supportive way, but talking directly with the heads of special education so they give us an input of what they need to do and what, what they think would work and structure, and then building a program together so they can, we can work it out so teachers have that opportunity. That's really one of the goals that the Teacher Center wants. But I'm using special education as an example because that just came to mind, but all curriculum in all areas.
I'll be in contact.
All right.
I just wanted to say an extra thank you to the business office in Mount Vernon because Mount Vernon is the Teacher Center's local educational agency, which means they hold our grant. And so Tony and I, me especially, am in constant contact with the district office to help us facilitate the grant. So we thank for that time on that.
I just wanted to add, this is our first time teaching an in-person course, and we're doing a STEAM in literacy course, so it's going to be hands-on at the Eastchester Library. And I think that's, you know, another area where we can work with Mount Vernon educators and share what we have, our loanables and other things. And I want to just thank Rita for putting us in today.
Thank you. That ends the superintendent's report.
Committee reports?
All right.
I have two reports. I'll get rid of the small one first. As far as security goes, we've been, for the last couple of months, reorganizing a lot. One of the important changes that we have coming up for next year is that rather than outsourcing, we had some guards that were coming in from an outside company in the last year. But for anyone who's kind of involved in the district knows, we've posted about a dozen and a half security monitor positions, which will be district employees, rather than going outside for them, which is, to me, very important. They will be union representative employees, which are the best kind. As the public may know from last time, we have contracted with Westchester County for SROs, which are school resource officers. Believe they're coming in for the fall. We will be allocating them to the schools where they will have the best impact. That's security for now. As far as facilities go, this Thursday, we're opening bidding for the demo of Grimes, the old Grimes building, not the new one. Okay, sorry. Okay. June 8th, there was an inspection by Mr. Silver and Mr. Raguso of the sub-basement of STEAM, because they were, we may be planning on putting other programs in that area. They did an inspection. One of the good things, they found some HVAC equipment down there that can be used throughout the district, which is going to hopefully save us some money. They started to orchestrate the cleaning of the debris that's down there, and Mr. Raguso will be overseeing some of the finishing repairs. They did find that a lot of work has already been done down there in the last few years, so it's not as much of a problem as we thought. Other thing for STEAM, the pothole that was complained about at the last meeting was fixed almost immediately. This is kind of not really facilities, but it is, that Ken's been looking into some energy savings, an energy-saving program through New Energy, so we'll be talking further about that. We continue to talk about the flooding issues within the district and trying to come up with remedies for that. And we also, as far as HVAC equipment for the summer, they just boomed some new compressors onto the top of the Grimes, so that we can get the equipment working there. And also, that was paid for by a grant, an unused grant, and from the same grant, we've purchased 60 small HVAC units to be used throughout the district to make a better environment for the summer, for summer programs.
Thank you, Mr. Lency.
You're welcome.
Trustee White?
I really don't have a report, but I did attend Rebecca Turner's talent show. And if you wanted to see some cute little kids, they were adorable. The whole school participated, the parents, special ed, and regular ed, and teachers, but it was very well-attended, very well-attended, and I enjoyed myself immensely.
Thank you, Trustee White. I also attended that talent show.
Yes, you did too.
It was very nice. You don't have any reports? Trustee Middleton, do you have any reports? Can you speak into the mic, please? Okay, wasn't on.
Okay. So I do, I do want to say that I attended Parker Schools' Honorable Celebration, which was phenomenal. Students did an excellent job, parents well-attended, and it was just great. I do have a question, though. As a trustee, I do want to know from this trustee board, what is my going into a building predicated on, as a trustee from one to the other? Because my understanding, when I wanted to do it on June 12th, was that it was postponed because of the fact that I had to connect without my knowledge, knowing that I needed to connect with two other trustees when I'm a trustee, who supposedly are chairs. So I need, you know, more clearance. If you want to wait to executive session, we can, but I do need to know, you know, in terms of just, not a report, but just to be more knowledgeable than I am not, as I thought I was, to go through the right avenue to make it happen.
We'll discuss that.
Okay. Okay. It's fine.
So Trustee Jenga and I had the opportunity to be at the SEPTA initiation of their charter last Wednesday, I believe. So we now have another PTA, special ed PTA, and I believe we'll be hearing from them soon. So that's the only other thing I have to add, as far as committee report.
I wanted to say congratulations to Gloria Adesobe, who was a former trustee with us, but now she's vice president of the special ed PTA. So that was, that was an honor.
So we'll be looking forward for them to be doing some special things. Any old business? Anyone have anything to speak about?
Yes, yes. I want to address the concern that one of our community members raised about Graham and the field over there. What has been the development on that? Does anybody remember from last meeting, there was some usage of the field by people who, well, people, a group of men using the field and creating a nuisance within the community? The community member said she wasn't able to use her driveway. There was litter, foul language, she felt like a prisoner in her own home. She referenced a divot in the, I guess, the field somewhere, and the fact that kids were being run off the field by men. So my question is, has that been addressed?
Well, it wasn't even, it wasn't even only Graham, it's Pennington, Trap Hagan, and...
I can only speak to the person who came up.
I can speak about Pennington as well.
I know. But I can only speak to the community member who showed up at the last meeting, and I wanted to know, was there any follow-up to that?
I know, a couple of years ago, we put signs out there to say the park was closed at dusk, and told the neighbors that they ought to call the cops if anyone is there after dusk, or...
I wanted to know what the policy of the school district, do you have to...
The parks are closed at dusk.
Well, so the policies are, the playgrounds are closed? How do you secure the playgrounds so that they are actually closed? Do groups have to register and pay a fee to use the playground? There's a divot in the field. That's a liability. Can that be rectified? I'm bringing back the concerns of the community member from the last meeting. So if this is something that is happening at other schools, we need to address it.
I agree.
I was only speaking to what I heard.
No.
So other people have complained?
Yes. Yeah, I heard another community member complaining about the same issue at Pennington. And, you know, they called the police, and I don't know, the police weren't able, weren't able to assist them. So I think, you know, this is public, the schools are public property. We can't block anybody out, but as Trustee White said, we put signs up, parks closed at dusk, I mean, at dusk, you know, no trespassing signs, and if the police come, they should, you know, take, do whatever they're supposed to do for trespasses. Now, I know there were some issues at one of the schools where you put up a little gate or fence, so people won't go in there and park. But other than letting people go, as far as foot traffic, I don't know how else we can...
Yeah, I don't want to close it off to anybody, but I think that there has to be some type of procedures in place, so that if a group would like to use the field, they can register at the Board of Education. If there's a nominal fee, I'm not trying to discourage people, but if they have a game, you know, so that the kids can have access to the field, because they're in communities. So what I'm saying is, if it's after dusk, I don't know. That's something, if there are signs up, I didn't see any. People use that, and I'm happy to see that they're using it. I mean, but the garbage, the fact that people leave in garbage, that they're infringing on people's right to, you know, to live a quiet life. I mean, the woman says she feels like a prisoner, so I'm sure that must be happening at other properties. I'm not really sure. And summer's coming up, so I think we have to resolve this. I don't want it to be an issue.
We've had this problem.
Mr. Bolshus, I know you had sent an email about a remedy, if you want, if you could share, please.
Yeah, I was saying, we had this problem before, and what they were telling us, and we discussed it, that we would put up the signs, that the people that was having the problems in that, in the area would have to call the police. But I'm thinking, just by sitting here talking, is that we would have to come up with something where we would probably have to get a security to go around to all these parks at night. Because I know just what she's talking about at Graham School. They get, after they finish playing soccer, they'll set up a grill, and they'll sit right there by their school all night, drinking, smoking, and hanging out.
I have actually followed up with about this, sorry, I had followed up with the Director of Security about this, and really, similar to what Trustee Red just said, the only thing he had, we had discussed was possibly putting a night, a roving nighttime security to go around to the schools to check on such a things. But he had also said, the only way to enforce it is to actually enforce it where you start charging people with trespass through the police department. And if you, if you don't do that, it's really knocking out their teeth.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, there's a policy discussion to be had. I think roving security should be considered district-wide, given the size of our district. I think we can preclude people from using the facilities in certain hours. And I think that the community concerns have to be addressed. So the things we can do are maintain the facility, make sure that things like the garbage is cleared, and the field is in good shape, and that the facility is in the condition that the community expects us to be in. But as far as human behavior and operating use of the facility, you know, criminal behavior, engaging in illegal activity, drug usage, alcohol, things like that should not be allowed in our facility. How do we control it? It's a partnership with the police department, and maybe if that's not enough, you know, hiring roaming security district-wide. I've had it in another district that I worked in. It's very effective, and it doesn't have to be prohibitively expensive, just one staff person, you know, just overnight, not through the morning. And I think that's a policy discussion the board and, you know, fellow administrators will have, and I think we can improve the situation for sure. I'll do my part to make sure the, the condition of the facility is in tip-top shape and what the community expects. Thank you.
Just a follow-up. I just want to know, if a group wanted to use the facilities, where do they go to register? Or is there a fee that's also, is it on the website?
So they go through, yeah, they go through School Dude. There is our normal procedure for facility usage.
So I'm asking, because it might be a community member that is not familiar with the district, so how do they get access to School Dude? Who do they contact, is what I'm asking?
So I think they can call Buildings and Grounds, and we'll advise.
Also, there's a link on our website. So if you look at the bar, where it has the little person, if you click on it, along with our brim, there's also where you could put in order to use facilities. So it is on the district website.
Thank you.
Onto resolutions. Have a motion for 6.1, Human Resources, approval to establish the title Associate Superintendent for Operations and Accountability.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.2, approval to establish the title Commissioner of Human Resources?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.3, authorization to establish the title Deputy Commissioner of Human Resources?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.4, Human Resources 84A, certified?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.5, Human Resources 84B, classified?
Yeah, second.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.6, Correction of the Romaldi Resolution from the June 6, 2023 Board Meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Me.
And then who's the second? Who's second? Oh. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Pay CNA Teacher to Administer CNA Certification Exam on June 28?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.2, Approval of Additional Summer Work for CNI Directors?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So I have a question. The last meeting, one of these individuals were approved for summer work. Is this the same? Is this additional? Or is this just a breakdown? Because they were approved for additional summer work.
That was special education.
So one individual is going to do, do work?
From this resolution?
Yes.
Yes. There's two individuals that are going to do work. If you see them on here, the Director of STEAM and the Director of E&amp;L. There's additional work that's outside of the rim of their job, and that's why they need additional days. But I do want to explain to you, so you guys are aware, that there are four directors, and over the previous years, all four directors received additional summer work. We made sure that didn't happen. We made sure we maximized their workload during their normal school hours. So this is additional work that has to be done. So you don't see one for ELA, you don't see one for CTE, and you don't see one for, yeah, E&amp;L's on here. So you don't, you don't, what you don't see is the savings. You just see the last two directors that are there.
So my question is, again, one individual is going to do two summer jobs? Because in the last resolution, we were approved for one individual, one individual that's on this list.
The person you did it for was for special education, the Director of Special Education. I believe Dr. Doggett is for the STEM Director. That's a different person. And also, the STEM person was approved under PPS.
Last time?
Yeah. The special education was approved under PPS.
So that's what I'm asking. So that one individual is going to do two work during the summer, two jobs during the summer, is what I'm asking?
No. The special education director will be doing special education IP CPSEs for special education. This is the science, technology, engineering person. That's a different, that's curriculum and instruction.
Right. But they were on last time on a resolution that we approved for work during... But they were on last time on a resolution that we approved for work during the summer.
No, that was two different people. Yes.
No.
Carol DeValier is the Director of Special Education. I believe the person on here is Mr. Dr. Jack Nandan, which is somebody different.
Right. I saw, and I remember the dollar amount per hour that that individual was going to be paid.
I believe their salary scale for their summer work is the same for the directors.
I remember, I remember it was broken down by hour.
He's pulling it up. So let's just count.
He's waiting.
So we'll pull it, we'll pull it. Let's pull it till we get clarification. Okay?
Can I have a motion to post 7.2?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries to post 7.2.
No.
Can I have a motion for 7.3? Authorization to hire staff for the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility June of Summer 2023?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries to post 7.2.
No.
Can I have a motion for 7.3? Authorization to hire staff for the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility June of Summer 2023?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.4? Authorization to create an international club at Mount Vernon High School?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.5? Approval for football team to travel to Piscataway, New Jersey for Rutgers Football Camp?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1? Authorization to hire additional summer school program staff?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.2? Authorization to continue service with Mercy College to implement the Smart Scholar?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.3? Amend Resolution 7.2, May 16, 2023. Authorization to approve 2023-2024 SEP Leadership Team Staff?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.4? Authorization to continue services with Lehman College to implement the Pipeline to College Partnership Program?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.5? Authorization to pay stipend for MBK program for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1? Approval of Student Services, Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 21, dated June 20th, 2023? Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.1? Authorization to award a contract on RFP number 2023-24-01 for legal slash general counsel service from Ingerman Smith?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.2? Authorization to complete budget transfers for the 2022-23 fiscal year? I need a second?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions?
I don't see a attachment in here. Ken? For the budget transfer? You want to explain the way that, there's no attachment?
This is done every year at this time. It's so that we can prepare for the annual audit. All of the accounts need to be balanced between revenues and expenditures so that everything's zeros out. And this is the time of year we cancel unused purchase orders and we balance the entire budget. This is done every single year.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Can I have a motion for 10.3? Authorization to rescind Resolution 9.6, dated May 16, 2023, RFP number 2022-23-07, Business Operations and Finance Consult Service to Bruce H. Singer?
Second.
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 All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.4? Approval of Food Service Management Contract with Aramark?
Motion.
Need a second?
Who was that who's second? Oh, that is.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1? Approve the settlement agreement on behalf of the Mount Vernon City School District against the city of Mount Vernon?
Motion.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2? Authorization, authorize an amendment to an employee agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Nobil Bitros, effective July 1, 2023? Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3? Authorize an amendment to an employee agreement between Mount Vernon City School District and Rita James, effective July 1, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4? Authorize an amendment to an employee employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Lisa Farley Thorpe, effective July 1, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5? Authorize an amendment to an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Sheila Solomon, effective July 1, 2023?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6? Authorize an amendment to an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Jessica Grave, effective July 1, 2023?
Motion.
Need a second?
Can we get a second? Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.7? Authorize an amendment to an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Ralph Burts, effective July 1, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.8? Authorize an amendment to an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Jonathan Walters, effective July 1, 2023?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.9? Authorize an amendment to an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Michael Thompson, effective July 1, 2023?
Second.
Questions, Concerns, Discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
We're going to put the other, we're going to put 7.2 back on the floor.
Mm-hmm. Can I have a motion for 7.2? Approval of additional summer work for CNI directors?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on pending matter?
Motion. Second.
Will we be coming back?
Questions, Concerns, Discussions?
Will we be coming back? Okay.
No. Okay, we will not be coming back.